This conference will now be recorded.
Thanks, Alicia. Hoover.
I'm here, Norma.
Okay, good, Joanne. How was the trip?
It was good.
Good, good. Do we want to take a little roll call and see who's here?
Paul Luck.
Nancy Hyde.
Michelle.
Jeremy Kellogg.
Hi, Jer.
Hello.
And Alicia's on, so we can call. If you've got anybody that's not responding, Joanne.
Yes, I have a caller one, two, three, and four.
I think Steve is two.
Joe Christmas.
Alicia, this is Manasseh Burt.
And Joe.
Listening.
Caller four.
I don't know if you heard me. It's Paul Luck.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Paul. Hey, I have everybody.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order then. And Michelle, do you want to give the place report?
I do. You read the report, so you know about what activity took place. I have a letter from Lance that he just dropped off recently saying that he was writing, and I think the mayor already knows this, writing an appreciation of the Clayton Police Department the week, excuse me, the weekend of July 17th to 19th, they had some problems at the Clayton Harbor Marina. There were several incidents on Friday night and Saturday night, and Friday night Officer David took care of things, and Saturday night Officer Poggi did. And he was very grateful. And he was, his last line is, "Both of these incidents could have turned into unpleasant circumstances if not for the dedication and due diligence of Chief Patton and his officers." My comment is that we've been hearing from other places that when you have to call the state or the county, depending on how busy they are, there can be a long delay in response time. And when I was chatting with Lance, he said he felt that it was the very quick response because they were local that made all the difference. So that's my only other report on the police department.
Does anyone have any questions for Michelle? Thank you, Michelle. DPW, do we have a John or Terry on?
I don't think so, Norma. Terry's on vacation this week.
Do you want, okay, do you want to speak for the DPW?
Yes, I will. So has everyone got Terry's report? The Washington Island Bridge work is finished, and there also the DPW is in the process of installing a new guardrail system. So they've got one side done. The other side should be completed shortly, I would believe. What else did he tell me? He had conversation last week with Homeland Security in reference to the FEMA project, the 2017-2019 project. Think everyone's familiar with that. And FEMA had said we could join those two together. And now Homeland Security has questions, comments, et cetera. So it's, it's appearing that the project, until all the additional paperwork is completed, the project will be, I don't put on hold, but it's, it's still going to be a few more months before that project can even go out to bid, is what Terry's thinking. This has nothing to do with Terry or Barton and Leguzic. This is all Homeland Security issues, which is very disappointing because we were hoping to have this work completed actually in the springtime. But other than that, I don't have anything else to report for DPW.
One thing that some of the residents over there on the island wanted was a sign that said, "Local traffic only" to be put up. They had temporary ones when it was under construction. So Terry's going to order those and get those put up over there. So maybe that'll cut down on some of the activity over there from the sightseers. Does anyone have any questions for Nancy? Okay.
No.
Was that a yes?
No.
Okay, good enough. Megan? Are you still with us? Okay, you're on.
Actually, I see that Matt Cooper's on. Matt, did you have any updates that you wanted to sneak in? I didn't see you on the agenda. I just didn't know if there's anything you need to update the board on, then I can bring you guys up to speed on my stuff.
Yeah, I was a little late to the party. I gave Joanne kind of last minute notice that I would be, I'd be joining. But hopefully, the board members did receive my update on the wastewater projects.
I sent it up, Matt, as soon as I got a...
Yeah, again, I apologize for that being late, but I can run through that briefly. On the, you know, the large wastewater collection and treatment improvements project, the final design is nearly complete. Our schedule looks like this at this point. We would anticipate submitting plans and specifications for the project to DEC. We have that scheduled for July, so we're right down to the wire on that one. But I expect, we did an internal draft review last week, and then we want to do a review with Megan and Carrie and your operators. And that can be done concurrently with DEC's review. So with that, we would anticipate bidding the project roughly in October, depending on how long DEC takes to review and approve our plans. And with that, we would award contracts likely in December of this year. And we would be able to give the contractors notice to proceed to start construction in January of 2021. And we're expecting roughly an 18-month construction schedule that would wrap up in June of 2022. And then I provided as well in our update, just a recap of the funding on the project. And to date, I don't think anything has changed with what's outlined with the grants and loans that have been awarded. You know, one question we still are contemplating is whether or not we should apply for another WQIP grant application. The village was denied in 2019 for that. And we, of course, we've got an additional grant since then, but we're looking at, you know, if we get additional grant, how much will the other funding agencies pull away? You get to a point where some of the grants have limits as to what percentage of the project can be granted. So anyways, we need to do a little bit of analysis on that and then work with Carrie and Megan on submitting that application if we decide to do so.
I think, Matt, the NBRC grant was denied, right, Megan? Because we have an open grant that's now 75% complete?
Correct. Unfortunately, they're not going to process our application because we're only a little bit less than 50% complete with our NBRC grant that's currently open. So that was pretty disappointing to hear.
Sorry, I lost you a little bit there, Megan. Is that, I take it that's an NRBC grant on a separate project?
No, we submitted it for the wastewater projects.
No, 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 the one that you already have in hand?
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's for the historic district sewer lateral project. They have an NBRC grant.
You still there, Megan?
Really?
Norma, are you having a difficult time hearing Megan, or is it just me?
No, I'm fine. Am I supposed to be responding to Megan?
I'm not sure why you can't hear me, Matt, so.
No, I can hear Megan fine. But we do have an open NBRC grant on the historic project, and until we get, I thought it was 75% used up.
No, not yet. We're only around a little less than 50, so that's why they're not going to let us, they're not going to consider the application for the wastewater plant because not quite far enough along on our existing.
Well, these NBRC grants come up pretty often, so we'll get the other ones spent down and give it another shot.
I have everything ready to go.
Right.
Yep. So continuing on, I do have a bullet item on here for update on permits. DEC is currently modifying the speedies permit for the plant during the comment period. Megan did prepare a response and requested that the offset program be eliminated from the permit. And Megan, I don't know if you've heard anything from DEC on that?
I haven't sent them in yet. I was, I didn't hear anything back from you guys, whether or not you had any additional comments. When I had talked to Dave, he said that you, someone in your group was reviewing the permit to make sure there wasn't anything additional. So I haven't sent that in yet.
Okay, yeah, actually, I did finish, yeah, I did finish reviewing that, and I don't think we have any other additional comments.
Okay.
So I think we're good.
Most of those pretty straightforward.
Okay. And then, so that's, that's the recap on the large wastewater project. And in addition to that, just a brief update on the INI study. So all the fieldwork has been complete. Some problem areas have been identified, and the report has been drafted. And again, we're actually doing internal review on that before we share it with you and get your comments on it. So that's, that's the quick update on the wastewater project. I certainly can field any questions that anybody has at this time.
Well, Matt, I think the good news is on the ready grant that they let us use the money on other projects and not as it was originally allocated. Because we got word, I mean, John sent that out late last week. Remember, well, we didn't want to use all the money down on the regional dock, but use it on Mary Street or someplace else, and they approved that.
Correct. You're, you're talking in regard to the shoreline work.
Oh, yeah. You don't care anything about ready, do you?
Oh, no, I do. Well, we've got ready money for the wastewater project as well.
Yeah, we do.
Right, yep.
But then the, so, and that, we've got all the paperwork back from EFC, so we can start. I think, Megan, you put in a request for some money, right?
Yep, I submitted our first ready wastewater treatment plant disbursement request last week, and EFC already said, "Thank you." We received it. So hopefully, I'm not sure what the turnaround time will be on that, but hopefully this week or next week, we'll be able to start getting some cash flow back in for that project.
Great. Does anyone have any questions for Matt? Thanks, Matt, for joining us tonight.
No problem. Everybody have a great evening.
Megan, do you want to move forward now?
Yep, I'm ready. I wanted to first check to see if you guys got my email this morning with the last minute forms for the change order and the final payout for SC Spencer and the resolution. They were on the agenda, but we were waiting on some final signatures that we didn't have until around noon today. Did you guys get a copy of that?
Yes, I did.
Wonderful. Well, I guess let's start with the change order for SC Spencer. Requesting board approval for the slight adjustment and the substantial completion and final completion dates for SC Spencer, and then to subtract the remaining allowance of the budget not utilized, which is $978.95. And that'll wrap it up for this construction contract for the water treatment project.
Do you want a motion for that, Alicia, or Megan?
Yeah, I'd be great. I'll make the motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Steve. All in favor of this change order for SC Spencer?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, Megan, next.
The SC Spencer final payment application. It's for $26,331.25. And this will be the last payment we make to them to, and they've given us the remainder of their closeout documents, so there's nothing outstanding for this contractor. So I'm requesting board approval.
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Second, has Jeremy? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we can close that off. Thank you.
Beautiful. And you guys, did you get a copy of the resolution for the ready project for the Riverwalk and the docks that's sent out?
Yes, but I, would you please go over? And I guess I'm a little confused because I thought we had done this before, so.
I guess the, when we were...
Yeah, on the 27th, that's right.
Yep. This is something that DASNE requested us to provide while we were getting our grant disbursement agreement. We're getting all the paperwork ready to submit to them. They wanted a resolution pretty much saying that the village is going to pay for that 5% local match as required by the ready program. So even though it's kind of redundant because we've already said, "Yes, we're going to pay it," they were looking for a more formal resolution that says that, you know, the village acknowledges that we're going to pay the 5% of the grant amount, or the loan, or the project amount for the four projects. So that's, it's nothing new. It's just pretty much just a resolution for DASNE for the, to get the grant disbursement agreement finalized.
Does everyone have that resolution in front of them so they understand what we've got to do here?
It's pretty much just laying out that, you know, the village understands that the 5% of the ready grant is $313,400, and that we're responsible for it, and that we're going to pay that amount. All said and done, because we're receiving the $5,954, $600 of grant monies from ready, the ready.
We should do a roll call vote, I think, on this resolution.
Aye.
Joanne, do you want to read off the names and do the roll call vote for the resolution?
Yeah. Mayor Zimmer.
Yes.
Trusty Bedore.
Yes.
Trusty Hyde.
Yes.
Trusty Grabowski.
Yes.
Trusty Kellogg.
Yes.
Beautiful. Okay, thank you. And I guess on to my actual board report. I think as far as approval items, the only thing I had in there was the lead and copper plan that I developed for the village. We hadn't previously had a formal lead and copper sampling plan that outlined everything that has to do with the required sampling for the Department of Health every three years. So I used the authorities' template and took the information that we had for the village previously and created this document. So I was hoping to get board approval to adopt this into the village's standard operating procedures for our lead and copper sampling.
Megan, is that the manhole replacement you've got on the agenda?
No, this was included in my board report. So the, I asked for approval in the board report, and then it was attached in, as an attachment in my big board report that I'm really doing.
Okay.
Does the board have any issues with the plan?
No.
No.
Okay. Okay, well, I will get it finalized and send over to the Health Department for final. They've looked at the draft and I can get it finalized now. And just another quick update. I already briefly mentioned it. Just wanted to let the world know because I'm still pretty excited about it. Dustin did pass his wastewater operator exam. So now he is officially a certified operator for both water and wastewater. So that's a pretty big achievement, and we're also very excited for him, the Water Sewer Department. Other than that, did you guys have any questions on anything in my board report?
I don't, Megan, but we should get the pay increase approved for Dustin for having his license now.
Yeah, I saw that was later in the agenda. I didn't know if I should, I saw it was in the treasure human resources section, so we can go right.
I see where it is. Way down on the end. I guess I was thinking you had that. Okay, we can do it then. That's no problem.
Doesn't matter to me. Alicia, what would be best for you?
It doesn't matter as long as the motion gets done.
Okay, well, I guess since we're already talking about it, due to the recent phys exam that does bring him up to a water wastewater treatment plant operator, and per the union contract, that means his rate increase, which includes the 50 cents per license, would be increased to $22.84 an hour effective 7/17/2020 when he passed his exam. So I'm requesting board approval to, for this pay increase.
Would somebody please make that motion for Dustin Norvis, $22.84 per hour?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
And we got a second for Nancy?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion's carried. Dustin, $22.84 starting July 17.
Beautiful. Any other questions on the board report?
No, I'm good, Megan. I don't bother anybody else. I think we're all good.
I think we're all good. I think Manasseh had the manhole replacement.
Yeah. Are you on, Manasseh?
I am, yep.
Okay, thanks. Jer, what is the news on the manhole?
Yeah, sure. So there's actually two things I wanted to cover. For the manholes, there are, there was specifically one manhole that was noted on, I believe it was James Street, that it's laid up brick. And as a contractor was digging around it, they were having issues with the bricks actually falling out. It wasn't scheduled to be replaced in the project. However, if the village would like to request it to be replaced, DOT will include it in their work. And in my discussions with DOT, it sounds like they have line items in their contract for manhole replacement. So that's been one of the issues in the past, is if the DOT doesn't have a line item for the work that the village is requesting them to do, then they have to create a new line item. And when that happens, the village has to pay that money upfront again. But with an existing line item, like a manhole replacement, they can actually use the contingency that they do have in the contract. So on this one, I talked to Terry and the contractor, Luck Brothers and DOT, and Terry went around or had his guys go around and look at a few manholes in the area that could potentially be replaced. And it looks like we have two of them currently that are laid up brick, which is, puts them at a pretty excessive age. And so we can have them replaced in this project without any additional costs out of pocket currently for the village. It would just come out of the contingency that DOT already has. So basically, procedure-wise, what we would need is just approval from the village to request that DOT perform that work. And that, that's just a letter that we put together and send to DOT, and that, that begins the ball rolling so that they can do all their stuff internally with design and then kick back a response to the village on whether or not that they plan to do it. On these ones, I don't anticipate that they would say no. They should take that work on and do it.
So they just need a letter?
Yeah, just looking for the village to say, "Yeah, we want to replace these two manholes, and let's go ahead and get hold of DOT and make it happen."
Absolutely.
Has everybody on board with that?
Yes, replace them.
Okay, so are you going to draw up the letter, Manasseh? We'll sign it and send it on? Okay.
Yep, I'll get that to you here in the next day or so.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda, and it doesn't look like it made it on the agenda, but I did send out the change order five for New Century. If you recall, at the last meeting, we talked about awarding a contract to Luck Brothers to replace that vault on John Street. And that total amount for that contract was going to be a not-to-exceed amount of $64,188. I dug into that a little deeper with Joe Russell afterwards, and because of the dollar amount on that contract and the fact that the village doesn't have their own contract with Luck Brothers that was competitively bid, they can't just give that work to Luck Brothers. So backing out a little bit, what we determined is that the best scenario would be to subcontract that work to New Century, included in their contract, and then they can go ahead and subcontract with Luck Brothers for the work. So basically, we're approving the same work that was approved at the last board meeting, but now it's going to be as a change order with New Century Electric. So it'd be change order five in an amount not to exceed $64,188.
And Manasseh explained to me the reason that New Century can do this is because they have the contract to do all the work. It's not in the state right away. Is that correct, Manasseh?
Yeah, a mix of that and the fact that they were, they've already won a competitive bid, so we did a bid process with them. So they're, they're on board. They're contracted by the village, and this work is within the scope of what, what they're doing already. So, yeah, that's an easy, easy one. And Joe Russell said, "Yeah, that's, that's the path that we need to take." The other alternative would be to competitively bid it, and that process would be long and drawn out, and you would have to go out and put it out to bid, get bids in, and then do an award and potentially bring another contractor into the mix to perform that work. So I think this is the cleanest and easiest route to, to make it happen.
Would somebody make the motion for change order number five for New Century Electric?
I will. I'd make the motion that we hire, we give the job to New Century Electric through change order number five, and that way, we're staying with an existing contract.
And do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Change order number five for New Century Electric carried. Thanks, Manasseh. What else have we got?
That's all I had as far as change stuff. If anybody has any questions, I guess one update I can give on the DOT project, the contractor and DOT hasn't really given us an updated schedule yet showing how far ahead of schedule they are. But just as a slight indicator, they have given the telecommunications companies, as well as National Grid, to go ahead to start pulling line in starting August 1st. I don't anticipate any of those contracts will be able to begin on August 1st. But just to give you a general idea, the original schedule didn't have that work being performed until November 1st. So that puts us a few months ahead of schedule, if that's an indicator for the, the schedule as a whole. And I think it's, I think it's pretty representative. So, yeah, I imagine we'll see telecommunications and National Grid in, in the village here in the next month or so, starting to pull lines.
They have subbed that out to O'Connell, right, Manasseh?
Yes, that's correct.
Well, that'll be good to see. Do we have any others? I did speak to Todd. I did speak to Todd and to Chris about their operators driving too fast downtown, and they agreed with me. Said they were gonna have a little speeding and slow them down, so if you see them speeding down there going through stop signs, so give me a call and we'll get back at them, because we had a near accident over on Franklin Street this morning.
Okay.
Surprise.
Yeah, hopefully they could get in line. It may be one of those things where sometimes a contractor, once they get on a job site for a while, they get too comfortable, so it's nice to give them a quick wake-up call and bring them back down.
Correct. Oh, do we have any questions from Manasseh? If not, I think we're good to go. Thanks for this input.
Yeah, thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
You as well. Okay, on the consent agenda, the only thing that I saw that we needed to change on it, to get Jeremy off as being present, he's on board as absent, so just take that out, please, Joanne.
Yes, I did.
Oh, you did? Well, mine says it's still in there, so.
Oh, you must have the old one still.
Okay, all right, whatever. I'll admit, does anyone have any questions on the consent agenda?
I do, I just had a few things here within the, the abstract, just for an understanding. I find this one so much easier to read. On page, and I don't know who can answer this for me, so. On page three of the abstract, under the Town of Clayton, it says JTH slash G Express. What is that?
Joint Town Village?
I don't know.
Doesn't it sound like the Joint Town Village?
Nancy, that is a, that's the description of the invoice, of the account number that I put it under, that Tina put in the system. So I think it's Joint Highway Garage expense?
Okay, that would make sense, sure, all right.
Joint Town Highway Garage, yeah.
Gotcha, all right. The other one I had a clear question on was on page four, we have Village of Clayton. And I guess.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead. No, you go ahead.
Those are the water bills that we have to pay?
Okay, all right, that's fine, okay. And then, because like I said, I think for me personally, this new is so much easier to look at, so I, I like it. Then I just had a wonder, I just wondered, the payroll was different. Is it different every, every payroll? So the first payroll was $30,840, but the next payroll was $33,000. Is it usually different, and is that because of overtime?
Yes, that is correct. Yeah, overtime and, you know, I can't really think of anything else, because we don't have really part timers, but.
Right.
Well, we do it the one dock.
Yeah, yeah, we do, so.
Oh, that would make sense, yeah, okay, that could be very well the additional, okay.
Usually I don't have two payrolls in a row, but I've been trying to catch up from going over to this program, the accounting program. But this is the last time I believe I'll have two, so moving forward, there'll just be one.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
So those were my questions.
Does anyone else have any questions? If not, can I have a motion for items one, two, three, and four on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion for items one, two, three, and four.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Michelle. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, consent agenda items one through four approved. Now on the capital projects, do we have any questions?
Yes, ma'am, I do. Under the Ready Improvement Projects for Barton and Lejuzaq, I thought that was, and I get confused about this, I thought it was being paid by DASNY?
Well, we gotta get the, DASNY is doing the Riverwalk portion, EFC is doing the portion for the sewer water, the sewer line. We just got EFC's contract back that they've approved everything, and then Megan said earlier that she was gonna put in for some money, so we're gonna get reimbursed. It just takes a lot of time to get the paperwork rolling.
Oh, and Nancy, also regarding that, Megan, Megan told me to go ahead and put these on the agenda, just to get them approved, and then she lets me know when they can get paid.
Oh, okay.
So it's not necessarily right after.
So we're not necessarily taking the 131? We're not paying that, okay.
Right, right.
Correct, Nancy. I, I have her pay them when we actually receive that disbursement from the funding agency, so when I submit it, hey, let's get board approval, so we don't have to wait till like the next board meeting, so we can get everybody paid as soon as we get approval and the money.
So it, hey. So it just sits in the bat, in the, in the wings, waiting for the, for the monies to be okayed?
Yep.
Okay, all right, that's fine. All right, thank you.
Would somebody make the motion to accept the item five?
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Can I have a second on the consent agenda?
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, thanks.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, capital projects approved. And Alicia, do you want to take us to the justice audit?
Sure, not much to it. As part of the annual process for the Office of Court Administration, we have to take a look at the records of the justice court. So I did that, I sat with Jamie and did that, filled in the template that they provide us to go through that process, and that's what you should have received as documentation for this. So basically, the resolution is just saying we did our due diligence, we went through the processes you asked us to, and there weren't any bad findings. So then that resolution has to be submitted to the Office of Court Administration.
So does someone want to put out this? We'll put it out for a vote. Do you want a roll call vote, Alicia, on this resolution?
Yeah, it's a resolution, so it should have, and just to add, this is not something new. This has been being done.
Every year.
Yeah, I would say as long as I've been working in government, we've had to do it.
Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote, if everyone's with that, starting with Mayor Zimmer?
Yes.
Trustee Hyde, yes.
Trustee Grabowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bedore?
Yes.
Trustee Kellon?
Yes.
Thanks for doing that, Alicia. Okay, now on this other deal that's on here, I think Alicia, you brought that up, the Workday and Reporting Resolution?
Yes, it's something that needs to be done annually for people who are appointed annually and are in the retirement system, who don't participate in a time sheet system, so typically it is a rare occasion where you have somebody, I happen to be that somebody, and it came to our attention that my information never got submitted back in 2019, so we need to take care of it now. So I worked with EFPR in the retirement system to figure that all out and submitted that all to Joanne, so that's why you have that resolution. And it isn't anything to do with dollars and cents, it just has to do with time.
Does anyone have any questions on why and how we're gonna do this? She sent all the information broken down on the time. So can I have a motion to get this Standard Workday Reporting Resolution down, please?
Sure, I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Michelle, and a second by Nancy?
Nancy, yes.
All in favor for the Standard Workday reporting?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we've got this squared away, thank you. And we already have done Dustin Norvis. Earlier in May, I think it was even last week, that I sent out the request from American Red Cross to hold a blood bank here in September?
Yes, yes, I read it.
Okay.
Yes, I mean, I'm fine with it, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna ask, if you're fine with it today, let's stick with it till September 30th.
I mean, unless something major happens that's catastrophic.
It's, and it's gonna be in memory of Lucy Rapp as well. So I'll call the Red Cross this week and let them know, and they have all the guidelines on how they'll sanitize and get things set up, so that'll be on September 30th.
That sounds good.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything?
Yes, I have. It's Nancy, I have two, two questions or two comments. Alicia, did you get my email today for, about the library? I sent it to you, Tina and Norma?
I did see it, that's a question for Tina.
Okay, because that.
Can't.
All right.
We were gonna keep that money, because they have to have it to do for their payroll, that we just weren't gonna send it to them this year. Then they gotta turn, and then Tina made a schedule of what they would have to send us monthly.
I think, I think that Tina had, had made a change in that, that she'd give them the money?
She gave them some money so we could open up their account, checking account for them, but that was before this budget was kicked in, I think.
Well, no, it was just in the last month or so that they did that. All right, well, I can, I'll just wait to get the response from Tina. She'll probably get back to me tomorrow. Let's see, the sign law, I didn't get it on the agenda in time, so I'll put it on next, the, the meeting in two weeks. After our last meeting, I did send the sign law out to Richard Ingersson, zoning, I sent it to Planning Board, and I sent it to zoning board, and I sent it to each and, each person, not each person, but each board indirectly. I mean, zoning got their own and planning got their own. Each chairman replied that, thank you, we got the, your email, but I never heard back from anyone. The only person I heard back from was Richard, and he just had a couple of different suggestions. So like I said, I'll put that on the agenda for next meeting, so that we can get that passed, if that's acceptable.
I think it's time.
Did any, last, just before our last meeting, Tina sent out the June report that we gave, or did anyone have any questions on that? The good news was we had 73% of the taxes collected in June, and we still had 21 days for collection in July, so I thought that was a good turnaround. So what else have we got? Anybody on the line have any questions? Okay, I just think that, I don't know, we've got, for me personally, right now, I have to look as our cup being more than half full instead of half empty. I put in a hell of a week last week, and I think that was kind of unfair. So we've got a lot of good things that are in the pipeline that are going. Joanne has done a stellar job to, June is a wicked busy month, to do taxes and water sewer bills, and we just had other things that kept coming up, and we just gotta be patient and get through all this. I mean, the sales tax news was good, wasn't a big drop in that, in fact, it was a little above what the expectations were. Dustin passed the fund Dallas policy, is it in the hands of Tina right now, working on that? Employee handbook is moving forward. So we've done a lot of things that we should be glad that are moving forward and that we're making headway with the team we've got. So without any other questions, can we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, meeting adjourned.